Hello, everybody. Welcome to our meeting tonight. If you all please stand and join us in the Edge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With my calling the roll, Erin?
Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer here. Councilmember Sherbrand.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Okay, we're all here tonight. There are no changes to the agenda, correct?
Correct.
All right. So with that, I would like, or entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda.
All set for that? Okay. Any questions or anything first? All right, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Next, it's our public input period. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with your comments, and we also ask that you come to the podium when you do that. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during the public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak?
Speak. Name is James Schmidt, 750 Ridgewood. I'd like to talk about city debt and the research I did. Our town has more debt than animals and Montesola combined. Now, this should be addressed more often than what it is. What's causing city debt? It's spending money on things we really don't need. You've got to balance your budget, and down here, it's not happening. I know you think, well, we need this new stuff. How about paying for the stuff before we get new stuff? Now, you go down and take a look at the city shop. That's a disgrace. It's just a disgrace. It's junk. Everybody knows it, and we don't put any money aside for it. We don't stick no money into it. We just spent a million bucks on a new street, but look at our city shop. Just go to Toret. Clope Anderson Street, the street is shot. It's bedshot for how long? People that live there pay taxes. They expect that something happened to that street. Nothing happens. Instead, we're making subdivisions, and that's where our money's going. People pay their taxes for the police department, for the fire department, ambulance, the streets, the water, not for subdivisions. Now, we did subdivisions for how long? About fifteen, eighteen years ago, our debt was two million. Now, it's ten million plus, and our interest rates now aren't two and three percent. They're five and six and seven percent. So, and at five percent, ten million, that's five hundred thousand a year. That's going to take a lot of money to pay just the interest. Before you vote on spending money we don't have, think about this. As many people in town think exactly the way I do, and we get a lot of calls at our house. I take the calls, and I listen to them. They talk, and I tell them, why don't you call some of the other council members? You know what they tell me? They don't trust them. And that's exactly what they say. Now, you folks can do what you want, but it might take a petition to show you what the people want the money spent on, and I got the ambition, and I'm willing to do it as I did it before. So you guys think about it a little bit before you start spending money we don't have. That's all the council say.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Hi, Laura. Good evening. I'm Laura Holt, and I just wanted to introduce myself as the new executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to let you know who I am, and I am your contact if you need anything from the Chamber. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public input period, and before us, we have the consent agenda. First item in the consent agenda, excuse me, first item in the consent agenda is approval of the March eleventh twenty-four regular city council meeting. Next, we have a resolution, a motion to adopt resolution thirty-eight. That's approving the bills. An expense report. Next, we have a motion to acknowledge receipts of city reports and minutes, and they are from the Board of Adjustments and our library board and Park and Rep. Next, we have a motion to review the decision of the Board of Adjustments to approve the request of Austin Grau for the property at one thirty Clara Avenue. It's an exception for setback requirements, which reduces the side setback requirements of five feet to four feet to allow for the construction of a two-stall garage on this property. Next, we have a motion to adopt resolution thirty-nine, amending the salaries, and those are for our seasonal summer employees. Next item is a motion to approve the payment of following downtown incentive grants. There's a facade grant, facade grant in the amount of one thousand five hundred forty dollars and forty-three cents to Heim's Awards for the building at one twenty-one East Bay Street, or, excuse me, East Main Street. Our office, that's our address, one twenty-one East Bay Street. So I'm ready to say that. Okay. Downtown, the next one, I believe that's it. There, we have the approval or the consent agenda, so I just need a motion to approve, a second, and then we can open it up for discussion.
I'm going to go.
I'll second it.
Okay. And it's open for discussion. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, Linda?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right. It is now five oh seven, and I'm opening up the public hearing on the application for voluntary annexation of the Camiller, is that how you say it? Camiller Tree Service LLC.
No written comments were received.
Okay, thank you. I was just going to ask that. And they're, they're addressed at sixteen seventy-two two hundred and twentieth Street, and they are asking to annex in because?
Senator Sewer Subject System there failed or would not pass the state departments. We do have a Santer Sewer Public Service Main in front of the property. Within two hundred feet, they are required to capture by O code in order for them to act on. I'm requiring them to annex into the city.
Okay.
And then they're tying onto the water service as well in the future. This will bring their property in. Manchester Enterprises has fast annexed the property to the west of them. It's property to the east, and that's not annexed yet at some point. Future, that would be nice to have that annexed since it's squared off with Highway twenty. It runs parallel twenty, kind of natural liner. Our property right away gives to the north of triangular piece. I do have lay description of that triangular piece from the county. County would like us to annex that in, so we have to fill both sides of the road there instead of them having ownership of half the road and the other half being the cities.
And that'll be done now?
That'll be done in the future.
A future date, okay. Any comment from the public here? Okay, hearing none at five oh nine, I'm going to close the public hearing, and before us, I need a motion to adopt resolution forty approving the application for voluntary annexation and annexing certain real estate property to the city of Manchester.
I'm making a motion over.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion or questions? Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Mary Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Next, Wes Schultz is here to talk to us tonight. He has been in the process of a development addition, or developing additional property along West Marion Street. The proposed development would incorporate a new twelve-plex apartment with the opportunity to expand to include two additional twelve-plexes, and he's here to talk to us.
Yeah, thank you. So I met with most of you, the council members in Tim County, just on the future of Westbrook, as you guys are all aware of, the tax abatement that was put in place by the city three or four years ago, five years ago.
Two thousand nineteen.
So that expired the end of twenty-three, so there is nothing currently in place. With the state laws have changed as it relates to abatements. What we're, what Tim and I have been discussing is more of a development agreement and a TIP agreement. So, like I said, I've met with everybody basically and had a chat. What I'm looking at doing, I have one building built that I just finished up with, and I'd like to build three more buildings there, so it'd be a forty-eight unit complex in total. Be right at a four and a half, twenty-dollar investment. I would complete that in the next three years. My ask would be fifteen years TIP agreement at eighty-five percent. There's no infrastructure that is needed from the city at this point, and it would be a generator of roughly, once it's off the TIP agreement, it would generate roughly ninety thousand or two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars per unit in tax revenue. So, yeah, so like I said, the biggest thing is, it's construction season now. I'd like to get going. It takes six months to build these buildings. So if I understand it takes some time to get?
It takes sixty to ninety days in order for us to do urban renewal amendment and put the development agreement in place.
So, so with that being said, what I'd like to ask for is like an LOI, a letter of intent, outlining the terms of the development agreement, and then while some of these things are formally getting written into place, it would at least give me the opportunity to start construction and offer this to the marketplace July, end of July, September first. And we do have a waiting list, actually, so I would love to continue to help grow the city, so.
If I can expand on a few things, because there's a lot of complexity here. We're talking about two different programs. We have the urban revitalization plan. This is where our tax abatement would come into place, and we do do that for any business, commercial or industrial. It's a ten-year sliding scale that's in place right now. Multi-family is also a ten-year sliding scale. It starts off at eighty percent and goes down to twenty percent. Single-family residential is a three-year, five percent, puts seventy-five thousand dollars of value that's abated. However, there's been new laws passed last year on this urban revitalization plan that says the cities on residential projects cannot abate the schools' portion of the property taxes. And so if you're doing a residential abatement, you have to have a minimum assessment agreement in order for the school to be guaranteed they get their funding for that.
That's what that meant. Okay, now I'm working on that.
Okay, so that's the resident urban revitalization plan. To make it a little bit more confusing, there's also now the urban renewal plan. Urban renewal is TIP or tax increment financing. Now, the TIP, there's a lot of things we talked about in this. Basically, we set the base elevation. We capture that elevation. Everybody captures the taxes that are currently being paid on that base value. The increased value is what is captured in either abated, rebated, or however we structure our deal. So right now, because this is residential, in the TIP, we would normally have to do the low to moderate income set aside for residential. If it's a designated area that is slummed and blighted, we do not have to do the low to moderate income set aside. My set aside right now in Delaware County is about thirty-eight percent, so it's a significant amount of money that's set aside. The property Russ is working on is also partially in the flood plain, so we can meet the classification of a slum and blighted area. Therefore, we would not have to do the set aside of the low to moderate income. So for residential, this, actually, this is a tool that works fairly well here.
Okay.
But yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of different things, and so how we structure that deal, again, is up to the council as to what we offer. But if we want to offer something similar to what we did previously with the urban revitalization, that ten-year, first five years was a hundred percent tax abatement, second five years seventy percent abatement, so averaged out to eighty-five percent over the course of that ten years. We can do that with the TIP on this location. We do have to change. We have to have an urban renewal plan and then designate what we're doing, set up the agreement, and have public hearings zones, but the council can do that. On urban revitalization, we cannot go past ten years because it is residential, and I'm not so sure that urban renewal will go over ten years on residential without the school and the county giving a blessing in that. I know you've got an agreement in another community, but I think we have some residential and commercial. It's a mixed-use facility. I think that's what structured that deal differently.
One is, the other one is full, fully residential.
Yeah, so I'm not sure exactly how that was structured to get you the longer terms, because my conversations with our bonding attorney, and that's who I have to listen to, if we go over ten years, we have to have the school and the county sign off on it.
Okay.
It's not impossible. It's just another step, and they do have the veto authority if they don't want to sign off on a fifteen-year, if we have to have them sign off on this.
Because everything we've done so far, yeast, Oakview, it's all been eighty, ten, correct?
No, no, those are different subdivisions, those residential subdivisions where we helped put in the infrastructure of that. It was a fifty-fifty with fifty percent of that being a forgivable loan. If you can build the tax base and generate enough taxes coming in to pay off that loan, it's forgiven. As we would normally do a subdivision, we typically pay for fifty percent of the cost of the street and work with them on water and sewer, whether we do section fees or whatever, flood damage. But because we were struggling to get housing started, we were needing developers that were willing to take that risk, we offered this to sweep things up. When Wes came in two thousand nineteen and talked about changing our urban revitalization plan to get the tax abatement, well, sweeter, that was that ten-year, five years, a hundred percent, five years, seventy percent. He met with the council at that time, so we made an amendment to our urban revitalization plan, put that schedule in place, but it was for five years, and the council was willing to reevaluate it after that time to see what they wanted to do. Now, with the new law, though, it's not as helpful as it was.
Right.
Okay, when Wes and I talked, we talked about eighty-five percent. Or, you know, all eighty-five percent, and you're talking a hundred percent, seventy percent. But my question to you is, does it make any difference in terms of us? Is there?
No.
Okay, so it comes out to the same amount of money. It's just that we would be getting some, some, yeah, taxes right away. So I kind of like that, that we would be seeing something from it. So to me, I like the eighty-five percent across the board better than the one hundred and the seventy. I think we did it the other way before because we were trying to help you out because you're kind of a more of a startup, you know, and that type of thing. And I think that Wes maybe, and I'm putting words in your mouth, just yell at me if you want to, but I think I'm putting words in your mouth. I think he feels at this point that he has a pretty good business going and that he can afford the eighty-five right at the beginning and run the eighty-five without it being a problem, as opposed to the hundred and the seventy, I think, was, was kind of the feeling I got from you today when we talked.
Yeah, it's just a different tool.
So it's just a different way to do it.
I understand the hundred percent. You're not, you're not getting into the revenue for five years. I told him to get that. This is just kind of given. We have to jump over towards the TIP. It's just a different kind of mechanism.
Right.
It's a model, so to speak, but.
I just wanted to check with Tim, if he'd be eighty-five across dozens.
It does make difference.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure before I.
Yeah, with, with the addition of the, one, you want to build this this year, and then two down the road, what kind of cost is that going to be to the city? Zero cost. All the infrastructure is in place. There would be, there would be no, no cost on the city. So the taxpayers are not going to pay anything, and then if we do something to help you build those three, you're going to put money in the city's bank account, so to say. I guess I would, I would say that you're, you're not really, there wouldn't be any investment from the city.
Right.
It'd just be the rebate of the taxes in the future.
Right.
You know, I think you also have to look at water and sewer revenues. I actually did some quick math, fifty-dollar average per unit that I've built just on the multifamily side in the last five, five to six years. That's generated, my rough average of math is a hundred and eighty-two thousand, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in water and sewer revenues. So these three buildings in addition would bring in right at twenty-two thousand dollars a year in revenue. So, and not to mention, they brought in a hundred and all the multifamily that I've built so far has brought in a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in taxes, even with those abatements and tools in place. So, so it's revenue generating. It is a, it is a tool to help with this investment, but long-term, once this thing comes on the books for you guys on the percentage, it's significant. So.
So basically, you're just asking for something so that you can go to the bank and get moving.
Right, because my costs are up. My interest is way up. The risk has never been greater in multifamily development than right now. So it's, it's just nature of the beast. I know you guys have.
While we're wait, while we're waiting for the paperwork, that's what.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so the biggest thing for me is getting an LOI, understanding where can we go together, then I can begin construction, because, I mean, it'd be September one before I would finish this thing, and I don't want to build in winter again. So. I've been apart building on your netting. No. Not at all. And nobody likes moving in the winter, is the other thing, too, so. And there's a market to serve as well. People are, people are wanting into the community. So.
So basically, tonight, consensus, we're with the council, because we don't have an action item on here.
Well, and the problem, until you vote on the action, the council hasn't approved it, so a letter of intent has to be a little more careful. This is what we will, you can do a letter of, this will be presented to the council, but you don't want to prejudge what the council's going to do. I mean, we all kind of have an expectation, but I think we could give a letter of what we're planning to do to you, but I don't know how you do beyond that.
Yeah. We do have committee, a little meeting on Monday. We can put that as an action and have a special meeting before a committee of a little meeting to normalize the letter of intent.
Like I said, it just needs to be more carefully written than a normal one, because?
Because we still have to have a public hearing.
Right.
I mean, there's still things, your intent is to look at this and consider this.
But to say otherwise, it makes the public hearing seem useless. It makes the vote seem useless.
Right.
So as I draft this up, though, the question that I want to pose to you is, where are you thinking ten years to fifteen years? Because Wes is asking for fifteen years, and where we've been in the past is ten years.
And if you do fifteen years, we need to have a county.
I will have to verify that with the bonding attorney.
Yeah.
Can we, if we did the fifteen years, and say, the school board and the county don't want to do fifteen years, can the city still abate their fifteen?
No. No, so that's, again, that verification has to occur. I gotta have another conversation with my bonding, with our city's bonding attorney to verify that as a tax financing project on residential. It's multifamily residential. It's not single-family residential. There was a difference in classification to verify what we can and can't do. But I know ten years, we can do. Fifteen years is potentially.
I guess I always worry about long-term, I mean, no offense to Wes, but long-term, something happens, that property would ever get sold, wish anything.
Yeah.
But if it ever got sold for any reason, if it was at fifteen, does that?
It stays with the property. Unless they closed it down and was vacated for a period of time, which there was nobody renting those units. And then that's when that could potentially come off. It'd be similar to providing this to an industry. They came in, opened up, and closed for a few years later, filed bankruptcy, and they're no longer in business. That's when that agreement would then become null and void. But with apartments, they typically stay full.
Yeah.
Unless there's a disaster, there could be tornado, fire, something that would cause that to no longer be functioning as an apartment complex or an apartment.
Yes, I'm probably more, I'm probably more of a ten-year person, just to try to keep our butt covered under that versus sticking our necks out to fifteen, and we don't know if the bonding agent will even let us do fifteen.
Well, again, I think it's whether the school, I think the school and county has a say in this. That is my recognition when I talked about some of the other subdivisions we did, because we looked at that on a couple of residential subdivisions to stretch out the timeframe in order for them to pay back that forgivable loan portion. At that time, I was told that we could only go ten years without school and the county having a say on it. Multifamily, it may be a different story.
It changed so much on multifamily knives over the years.
Well, in the last five years, multifamily used to be classified as commercial, and they paid based on ninety percent of the value of the property. Now, it's taxes, residential property, and they're paying up fifty percent of the value of the property. So there's already been a lot of changes in just five years. I think this is a great project, and again, as Wes stated, we already have the infrastructure in place, so we're not adding anything. It's just structuring the terms of the agreement.
And, and part of it is, too, though, that it's, you know, we do it for Wes, but then somebody else comes in. We have to keep, so, so we have to make a decision based on, on everybody, not just on what Wes is doing, and that, that makes it harder, I think, because you're always looking at, you don't know what's coming down the line. I have a tendency to be with Bill and think ten years, just because I'm not.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm not sure I want to go to fifteen. I understand, like, you want us to go fifteen, and, you know, you're the businessman, but in terms of, I would like to see it come on to the roles in the city faster, I guess, as part of mine. I'd like to see all that tax come to us as fast as we can. Obviously, we need, they keep cutting us back. We can't afford to give out. So I would be tempted to go ten, but go ahead.
Can I say something?
Yes.
I was just going to say that the, I feel like if I were in your shoes, the TIP and a development agreement, excuse me, agreement is a good, is a good tool, because, you know, thirty-six units in a community of this size is a pretty good percentage, right? So that ability to use the development agreement gives you a better filter on what kind of project you're going to agree to. Having the abatement that was in place before, that was kind of a community-wide, city-wide situation where it fit, and it was zoned properly, you couldn't really control it.
Right.
So now, I think, moving forward, this is a good situation from that perspective.
More limiting.
And also, what's that?
More limiting in terms of what would be.
Just in terms of acceptable to the community, what's the right project, the right time, the right partner.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think maybe you need to get some more answers.
Structure to put together. We can change things, so I'll start and see if we do the fifteen years. Bring it back, council. You can always reuse it.
Right.
Yeah.
But find out for sure.
How we, we can structure it.
Right.
But I think, sounds like you're comfortable with the eighty-five percent. It's the duration.
Yeah.
And then are we, have it as an item?
We'll have it as an item at the next.
At the committee as a whole, then, and you're welcome to have a chance again.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
We'll be, we'll be in communication, I'm sure. Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate everything you're doing, Wes.
Wes, thank you.
All right. Next item, we have a draft ordinance that we put together regarding our mobile food vendors. And I think everybody got an opportunity to read that.
Yeah, there's no action on this tonight. It's just worked on adding some language to what we already have in place, kind of like we had talked about. So it's really just for council review.
Comments, let us know if there's something you like, don't like.
Wants to take out, and then we can, we can talk about it, too, at Monday's meeting.
Monday's meeting.
Many needing to.
I just had one question, because I know we came up with it once, or maybe it's come up more times that I'm not aware of. Then, as part of in this, or is it only the application process that we do like a background check on the company coming in? Because I know we do that. Is that listed?
Solicitors and peddlers permits, we typically have the police department do a review, as we do require them to provide us with names and copy their driver's license or whatever identification they may have, so we know who's going door-to-door or who's out in the community.
And that's something they fill out on the application process, correct? Okay, all right. I didn't know if it had to be stated in this or not, because I didn't see that it was stated, so. I didn't know if it had to be stated in this or not, because I didn't see that it was stated, so.
And that may be part of the background check the police department does do, just to verify.
Anybody have any questions, comments, or? Do we need to just then put it on to the voted on again or?
Yeah, we, I don't have it in ordinance format yet, so we'll just have it on for a future meeting.
Okay.
Um, I know we did the resolution with the fee schedules too. I think you saw in there what we currently have for fee schedules and what we propose is doing the same schedule as the transient. Is that the one that's the one day, five day?
But one day, five day, six month, one year.
So.
Okay.
Um, so we just do a resolution of that as well.
And we, if there is no dissension, we may go ahead and waive the second, uh, reading and proceed with the third. We haven't ready to go because we're getting this party.
Yeah, we do first reading out a single meeting and then at the next meeting we would waive the second if there wasn't anybody concerned and then proceed with third and final.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that? Then I'll move on. Next thing, we have our Freedom Rock request from Riverbend Hub and Grill. And you know, uh, Mr. Zerly was here to talk to us about that. He sent us this really cool picture of him in front of it. Um, I think we just need a motion to approve the request. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any other questions on it before I take a, ask for the motion? Okay, I hear a motion.
I'll motion do.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay, next item. We have a resolution, uh, I need to adopt that, resolution forty-two setting a date for the public hearing on the urban renewal plan amendment for the Manchester urban renewal area. Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, as we talked a little bit, as I kind of explained with Wes, we do have a new industry that's looking to relocate into Manchester and seventy thousand square foot facility. Uh, in order for us to be able to use TIP, we have to amend our urban renewal area and put in the plan what we're going to use that money for and how we're going to put that together. Uh, right now, we are looking at doing a ten-year eighty percent tax rebate. With this project, uh, potentially sixty employees. Um, they'll also have a facility, uh, truck shop adjacent to the property, property. I think that's seven thousand square feet. So first things first, kick us off, we'll have to have a public hearing on the, um, urban renewal plan amendment. We'll set that for, when do you have that set for?
April twenty-second at five P M. Yeah. Do I hear a motion for this?
For approval, resolution two forty-two.
Okay, I'll second that. I'll go with Linda this time. Okay, sorry. All right. Any further questions for Tim? Or comment? Okay, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we need a motion to adopt resolution forty-three and that will set April twenty-second at five P M. As the date and time for a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with A One Mobile Storage Service.
That's correct. And that's what we just talked about. We'll have to have a public hearing of the proposed development agreement. Development agreement is looking at a ten-year eighty percent tax rebate.
I need a motion and a second.
Yes.
Go ahead, Will. I got Bill. I'll take a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. Bill?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Faster, Tucker, faster.
Okay.
At first, everybody was all nervous, so we made a motion and a second. Now we're just in a hurry.
Yeah, I know Iowa's going to be playing pretty soon, so that's probably part of the deal. Okay, uh, I need a motion to proceed with the second consideration and adoption of ordinance two, and that's regarding our water and sewer rates. I hear a motion.
And that's the question.
Yes.
Okay, because this is an ordinance, we do have to have three rate.
That is correct.
Well, we can't waive an ordinance.
I don't have, I don't have the language on here to waive it.
Okay.
And you typically with rate increases, we'd like to do the three readings.
And this one is the second, correct?
Yes, correct.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
There you go, Joe, you got it. Do I hear a second?
I would like to second that, please.
All right. Any further questions? All right, Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right, next I have a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance three. And can you talk about this repealing ordinance four fifty-two ninety-six, providing division of taxes levied on taxable property in the nineteen ninety-six in addition to the Manchester urban renewal area?
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of these after.
Yeah, we, we have three of these tonight and we have to take separate action on all three of them. The urban renewal plan. Uh, anything that was adopted after nineteen ninety-six, it's a twenty-year sunset unless it was for, uh, slum and blight. Slum and blight, you can extend it out a little bit further than that, but because these TIF ordinances, these are TIF ordinance, taxing for financing ordinances for certain areas in town. And those are identified in the map that is attached. These have come to the end of their life expectancy or allowable, they have to be sunsetted. So because it was an ordinance, you have to repeal it by ordinance. And again, there's three of them tonight. Uh, they're wanting to get these cleaned up and off the books.
And none of them are areas that we want to look at currently. Renewing, so that's part of discussion now, but they're all kind of unique ones.
All right, and this is repealing ordinance four fifty-two dash ninety-six.
Correct. So moved. Second.
Any questions? Anyway, okay. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
All right, we have another one here. This one is a motion. This will be the first reading and consideration of ordinance four, repealing ordinance two dash two thousand, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the two thousand addition to the Manchester urban renewal area. It's reached its sunset, needs to be repealed. Needing a motion.
I move.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And our final one is a motion to proceed with the first consideration adoption of ordinance five, repealing ordinance forty-seven dash two thousand one, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the two thousand one addition to the Manchester urban renewal area.
I'll make a motion.
My second.
He's gonna keep going. Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yeah.
I made it through it. All right, next, I need a motion to adopt resolution forty-one, and that's approving officer reimbursement agreement. Do you want to speak to this, Jim?
Yes, personally, I apologize for putting you in this position. That was supposed to be in with the hiring. Salary resolution, um, for the last, I don't know, three, four years. Um, with the difficulty of finding certified officers, we started buying out contracts. Almost not every city, but the large majority of them, I hire an officer that's not certified. It cost us eighty to twelve thousand dollars to get somebody certified. Um, so then I have them sign a contract saying that you leave before five years. You have to reimburse us based on depreciation, how many years of service you've given. All the other cities have been doing it. Um, this is the way for us to get certified officers. It's more efficient and it's cheaper for us to go this route than it is to find someone that's not certified. So, um, that was the agreement I had with him, that we would buy out his contract. Again, I apologize for overlooking and not putting in the salary resolution.
Okay.
And this is by far the cheapest one we've had.
Yeah, so just so you understand clearly, we are buying out his contract from his previous employer.
Correct.
And he is signing the city to reimburse us if he leaves before five years.
Exactly. Okay. So I need, uh, yeah, so, um, the city of Manchester is agreeing to pay up a contract between Mr. Hall and the city of Newport City in the amount of fifty, five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. So I just need a motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Come second. Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
All right, and then our last item on the regular agenda is dispatch transition. You want to talk about this again?
Yeah, sure, um, sure. Oh, there was an agreement reached between the city, the, the county and, and the dispatchers, the full-timers. So that's been taken care of, um, it's moving, it's going on April one. I'll be honest with you, I'm pretty much leaving that up to the county to handle the actual moving of the equipment and all the getting the vendors in place and making sure things in place. You know, we're trying to make sure we have plans in place to handle things in order for the dispatchers to do for us. Um, you know, house checks, um, paying, paying water bills, um, stuff like that. We're trying to get things in place like that. We're going to lose a lot of the services we're used to, especially running stuff through the state and federal N C I C. Um, I think we got a plan in place for that. Got a plan in play, uh, you know, as of right now, um, there will not be a person up front, full-time, Monday through Friday. Barb said she'd like to stay where she's at. Um, I don't blame her. Just for peace and quiet and not being interrupted. So my thought process is we'll move two officers up front. Probably a day shifter and an overnight person, um, is my thought. You kind of have things covered that way in case there is somebody there. Um, there's currently a intercom system in there. We're going to utilize that. That's already hooked up. The dispatch local. So the plan is somebody comes in, there's not somebody right up front to meet with them. Push the button, we'll have a sign above it, push the button, that'll, or, or you can call dispatch on yourself. That'll go out to dispatch. That way everything's handled exactly the same way. Um, they're, they're the ones responsible. We're putting it's called CAD, computer act, computer aided dispatching. We use CAD for everything as far as our calls for service. They can get all the information they need. They know what to ask about rather than us messing it up and then having to get back all of them and get more information. We're just going to run, they're going to basically our reception, see if they're located out of the chair. And then we should uniform Monday through, Monday through Sunday or Sunday through Saturday. It's the same no matter what time of the day or what day of the week is, it's all handled the same. Um, that's the big thing, kind of getting that all figured out. Um, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
We're hoping we get everything looked at, but I guarantee you there's going to be something. You know, they seem, you know, the vendors seem to think this is going to be very seamless. I guarantee there'll be something. So the plan is to move one, one station, leave the other one functional until that one out there is running fully. But we know it's working the way it's supposed to, and then shut the other one down and move it out there.
There's no break in community.
Yeah, the only thing will be nine one one. Um, that's going to draw it through beginning counter just a little bit.
Okay.
Which is no big deal.
But the other aspect of this is the city's policy on how we've handled water disconnections. In the past, when we shut people off for, uh, not paying the fees, they were able to go to dispatch, make the payment because we provide dispatch with the amount due for the after hours, because there was a, a bit more charge for after hours reconnection dispatch. Then contact the water department to have someone come in and turn the water back on. And then for us to collect the fees the next day, we just walked across the hall. Uh, we're not going to send someone out to the jail to pick up the water fees. And so I think one of the things we need to talk about as a council is how we handle disconnections after hours. If, if they're disconnected after hours, do we, because I don't want our water operators or, or public works departments taking money out in the public at night to have things turned back on.
Yeah.
We could, me and Jesse talked about this a little bit. You know, they come in, yeah, I guess give them a water bill, call an officer and we'll have a receipt book there for them, take the money, um, contact Chad. Have it dealt with that way. So it's going to be a little more, it's going to be more put on the guys. I mean, we might have the dispatcher there to do stuff for us, so.
What do other cities do?
Uh, it's a mixed bag. Uh, some of them have electric utilities, so they're required to be on twenty-four, seven, on call. Others, they don't, you're often on the next day when they come in to make, make the connection to collect the payment. Uh, but with our hours, office hours, it's hard sometimes for people to get it here. We do have an override drop box. Would you check it on a regular basis? But it, it's not a smoothier. And if people pay their bill online, we have to go log on and look to see if they've paid. If it doesn't give us an alert, then this person's paid. So there, there is more accounting, there's more steps we have to go through. So, uh, one of the things is for us to work with the police department, see if there's potential for that to work. Again, the only way they know who's shut off is we provide them with lists and what they have to pay in order for you to come back on. We have had some people have been shut off, reach out to staff via Facebook Messenger. Not through city channels, so that's not the right way to do things. We're not handling it that way. Uh, I don't care if you have employees' cell phone number, makes everything handle to, to correct procedures.
Right. Okay. Want to talk about that more on Monday?
Yeah, more Monday.
Okay. All right, thanks, Jim. Okay. Um, next, I saw Jason come in first. Always, Sam was here first, okay? He was just hiding in a corner and wasn't making a single. I'll let you go first and Sam.
So, anybody east main? Construction meeting was held on Wednesday, March thirteenth. Top grade initially was, the thing about getting started, maybe later this, this week to get starting to get some of the temporary access roads in place. They got to move, uh, install a new fire hydrant up by on the south side on the corner. That's where the temporary access road will be given in apartments and for Carl's speed. Um, with the weather, the hard closure for the street may be a little bit later than next week. I think the city sent out letters for April first. That was kind of the discussion at the pre-con that hard shutdown on April first, that may get pushed back a little bit. They might still get things set up and on April first, set the detour and everything up. But there still might be some accessibility for some of the business owners and property owners on April first. So it's a hard, hard shutdown, may not occur in the first, and you might not see a whole lot of activity until.
I, I would just try just putting the detour route up until we know it's going to be a hard shutdown, because I don't want to have the signs up and people make that crack up there, because that's a busy intersection. And the only way to get back out of there is to come all the way back around. So, uh, I cover, you put the signs in place, cover them up until we're, we have it shut down.
We can talk about that, to make sure that, don't actually shut it down, it's putting it in place until it's ready to rock and roll. It'll take some time. I mean, they might start setting the detour up in the morning and that road will might be accessible until, say, maybe midday. It's going to take some time to get everything in place and all the signs up and whatnot. So it'll take some time even the day that they do close it down. But like I say, just depending on whether things might not start happening right away, we'll kind of play that by ear. Wind Street Media com have all our items done, Alliance. I got an email from them today that actually, we said they're in pulls Thursday um, out there. So everything should be done. And I think that's left is just kind of, kind of like those two handfuls, which should be much of an issue, one of them with during the project and then the other one, get them when they can here. But, um, that's pretty much everything I have, unless anybody has any questions, Brian?
Did, um, Jason reach out to you about what I brought up to him by chance? At the end of, um, Brewer Street? I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Have they put anything out on the highway twenty for task compared to semi-traffic or?
No, um, I actually, I did reach out to D O T on that. We did, just to see what their thoughts were. So if something would go on highway twenty or state highway, it has to be go through the whole permit process and whatnot. Um, have to be a change or city, the, the D O T won't loan out any digital signs, so that would be a change or item and go through. Even the contractor, I'd say that's go through the permit process, um, to do all that stuff. I I don't know if it'll, if it would create more confusion or not to try to figure out, you know, what do you put on the signs, where you put them for sure. So it seemed like potentially more of a headache than, than what, I mean, I understand, you know, trying to, trying to get the communication out there and you let everybody understand as much as possible, but same time, don't want to try to entice more confusion. Hopefully, you know, the local traffic after the first few days or at least the first week, there, I'm sure some people are going to go down there and all crap, try to turn around and come back around, but at least the local traffic.
I'm just trying to avoid having semis do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that won't be fun.
And they've seen, although they'll have a road full of sign rights. Alien Brewer.
It's hard for a semi to turn around and get back on, what are you going west to the next exit? That's the hard part.
If they come, yeah, if they come off of twenty and down, which they should be able to get through Brewer, um, and I'm you never know, I mean, even if some truckers, they come through, they might say, oh, I'm not going to town. you never know, I mean, even if some truckers, they come through, they might say, oh, I'm not gonna tell them to take a different route, and other one might be, oh, I can, I can still get to where I gotta go, so they might still try to go that route, no matter what, what the case may be.
And they rely on their GPS a little bit too.
Too much?
Too much.
Hence the light at the, uh, library? Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but one of the things we will be monitoring is the intersection of Brewer and Main with all the detour truck coming through there, that's currently a two-way stop north-southbound, but we may have put temporary stops on Main Street to get traffic.
That's what I talked to Jason about, a four-way, because I live there and we never try to get out there now, even. We go down Marion and get on where we get the stoplight, and otherwise, they're just gonna come down Marion and try to do the same thing.
Yeah, so we may have to put some temporary stop signs on Main Street there. And some of you may remember, there were horrible stop signs.
They used to do that for school.
For school.
Yeah.
Back in my day. And what was speed signs on Brewer too?
Thank you.
Trying to slow them down.
Because everybody backs out to get out of their driveways on that street, yeah.
There has to be a stop light at Brewer?
No.
Where they should move it to.
Stop signs, four-way stop.
Yeah, they'd put it in there at school time.
And there's not gonna be any parking on either side of Brewer?
That's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Or, um, or a Butler in Iowa.
Iowa.
Down Butler. We have Iowa Butler and Albert Stiles, so there'll be no parking on, I think Stiles already no parking, isn't it?
Oh, but it should be.
That'll be signed the same way, so.
Okey-dokey, thanks, Sam.
Thanks.
Jason?
All right, we have the, uh, pre-construction meeting this morning with Pierce Tobin. Um, they're on track to begin the majority of the work after fair is completed of my grand avenue.
Okay.
They're likely to mobilize into Tao the week before fair to start working on the deep sanitary sewer up on the end of, down the east end of Fairview there, but they will not be impeding either, either direction basically of the fair's operations. So the east of the north entrance, and then they'll leave that south end basically untouched until after fair, um, so that I know that the fair board's concerned, what they're gonna do logistically for that week there. I think they've got a couple of large concerts coming in, and so we're going to, you know, get working genie just to make sure we're not gonna impede anything that they've got going on, but we are not planning on any construction activities on the south end of that, on that project until after fair is complete and basically everybody's gone.
Okay.
So that's all I have, unless there's any other questions.
How long they thinking, time was, you know, they have to be completed by October first, so we have sixty days.
So it's not going to be a long duration project.
Okay.
And it should be minimal impact to the public up there.
Awesome.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right, Jim?
Can you give a little update on some of the property cases? So, we have the property on Gay Street that we've talked about, titled and transferred over to the city.
Okay.
It's all recorded, so now it's time, what do we do with it? Um, we have three new cases that have been filed on, one on South Madison, one on Second Street, one on Grant Street for nuisance abatement.
Hmm.
Uh, they were just served, uh, some of them last week, some of them the week before, but those are all going down. And with that, we don't have any abandoned property cases pending at this time. Uh, the one that we had was, we just took title to.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess we're able to take on, yes, we kept saying we kind of keep rotating them, well, we're probably ready to do some more whenever the city's ready, probably time again.
Yeah.
That's really all I have.
I'm sure Tim will be, be working with you. Okay. Any questions for Jim? All right, Tim?
Uh, the police chief search is underway, first open meeting met last Friday, talked with Jeff Taylor. Uh, we're gonna meet again this Friday. Uh, tentatively, we're looking at April eighteenth and nineteenth for interviews. So if you could please look at your schedules, uh, mainly it would be looking at Friday, the nineteenth, for doing interviews. Uh.
That's most of the day, correct?
Most of the day, correct. Uh, we, we'll get things planned out as far as an open house, uh, meet and greet type thing, and try to get things finalized to how we're gonna do our interview process, uh, meeting with, with Jeff on that. So that process is moving along, we, we've got eight fairly good candidates. So we're trying to narrow those down to four, uh, maybe five. Um, bringing in to interview. And then Wednesday, Thursday this week, I'll be at Iowa City for I M M I, Iowa Municipal Managers Institute for continuing education training.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Okay. I'll start at this end, Bill?